Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Still here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Herbert?
Here.
Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, please say indication, please.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to come out of executive session, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry, jumped right into it. Got a motion to come out of executive session. Second motion is second. Madam Clerk, could you read the role?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Present.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell?
This is Pre. Touch each one of us. Sensitize us to your will and to your way. Allow the winds of the Spirit to move within this place. The leadership, the community. Allow calm and peaceable hearts to be sensitive to your grace. Allow us to make decisions that are for this community of ours that we call our beloved city, Columbia. Touch us, ignite within us, and yet arouse within us a kind of sensitivity that might move beyond this place and into the community. We ask it in the Creator's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, I will introduce ordinance for first reading. Item number one, the only item on today's agenda. Ordinance number 2025-043, repealing ordinance number 2021-021 that amended the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 14, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 5, offenses involving minors to add Division 4, conversion therapy for minors prohibited.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? And this is for discussion purposes only?
Second.
A motion is second. We're here today to continue the conversation around the ordinance that was passed in 2021, ordinance 2021. And I want to go through the timeline of how we got here. And I want to talk a little bit about a lot of the information that's been shared out there that I don't think is correct and that we want to make sure that we have all the facts. So was very surprised at a lot of conversations I've had with people over the last few days and how few people knew actually what the ordinance was, that what it actually meant and what it actually did. But this was passed in 2021. In 2021, a letter was written from Senator Kimball to Allen Wilson, asking him to have the city repeal this ordinance. 2022, same letter was written again. When we passed this, it passed four to three, and it went into our books. Not another word was talked about it. Nothing moved forward. 2022, after the General Assembly passed the Medical Ethics and Diversity Act, which expressly preempts any municipal interference in medical practices, procedure, and conduct, judgment, and providing health care services, including psychological therapy and counseling. That was led by the same Senator, Senator Kimball. Since then, nothing until February of 2025 was there any discussion. And there was some information sent to legislators and so forth, talking about what conversion therapy is and that Columbia was the only city. Then the Senate Finance approved a budget without the proviso related to conversion therapy, the procedural vote. That was April 9th. April 22nd, the Attorney General sent a letter to the City of Columbia asking the ordinance to be repealed by May 5th. April 23rd, 2025, the Senate passed a budget proviso related to conversion therapy on a floor amendment, which was overwhelming, supermajority voted for. I think the vote was 41 to 44, to be exact. Then came May 6th, 2025. The House of Representatives passed a budget with proviso related to conversion therapy, procedural. May 20th, 2025, City Council meeting ordinance on conversion therapy on the agenda for repeal vote, ending up accepting a public opinion, not voting. Also protecting our budget, which we're going to talk about today, too, so everybody understands what we did and why we did what we did. 2021, May 21st, 2025, Conference Committee shared with proviso related to conversion therapy, procedural, which means it moved into the Conference Committee. And then it was voted on in Conference Committee. And then we're here today. Now, there's this great story that's been generated that we created and advocated to make this happen. To be quite frank, I haven't even thought about this ordinance since it was passed because, number one, it's never been used in the last decade. There have been no cases in over a decade. Ninety percent of the cases that have been reported and almost all the cases that we heard about here last time were with religious organizations, which are exempt from this. No unlicensed provider is included in this, and it is a civil penalty. How many people read the ordinance? How many people knew that it was only a civil penalty and there was no criminal penalty? So understanding that, part of why I'm asking that is because I was very surprised that the folks I spoke to that realized that there was no teeth in the ordinance, that it really didn't do anything to protect. Because L L R is the licensing over this. This does not do anything for religious organizations. So when we go through this, one of the conversations around it was, is the timeline? Why was it important to talk about the timeline? Because the timeline shows and talks about that this was in the budget the whole time. Every member of this council probably had some conversation at some point with the legislators throughout processes about what is going on. We didn't start this. You know how this started? Because for two years, it was quiet, and you had an A G who now and a Senator who now are running for governor. We didn't create this. And beyond popular belief, nobody up here called up and said, "We're advocates for this." But to be honest, I wish it had all gone away, but we are where we are today, right? And we know this. We know this for a fact, and we can prove that. But the reality is, folks, that now we are being penalized. And we have to come up with money to see where we're going if we don't repeal, right? That's where we are. We made a provision in our budget, and our city manager is going to explain all of that. They're going to explain to you why we did what we did. Because if you read the paper on Monday and you went to the second page of the article that was written about this, you would have seen right under it, if you read it, that there was an advertisement in there. And that advertisement was what? Our budget, which we are statutory required to have a published balanced budget and be adopted before July 1. So we've made provision because the only money that is not encumbered is hospitality at this point. But that doesn't mean that hospitality is the only place that money would have to come from or could come from. We're going to have to decide how to fill that gap if we move forward. Where is that money going to come from? Is it going to come from parks? Is it going to come from our road fund? Is it going to come from fire, police? Where is that money coming from? Because it has to be in there. And I think what really surprised me is that over the last four years, there's absolutely zero public record that this conversation happened in any other city. Not one city. There's zero documentation. Licensing L L R, no cases, no complaints. But I'm going to be honest with you, there is nobody on this council who wants to see anybody abused. We have laws in place, we can deal with that. And I'm going to tell you, if somebody reports abuse, we're going to follow through directly and go after those individuals. But if we think that this ban is protecting people, I got to be honest with you, the civil penalty, you know how many civil penalties you'd have to rack up for them even to look at you in L L R? So the question becomes, what are we going to do? Well, I'm going to tell you what we're going to do. We're going to continue to be the city who we are. We're going to continue to protect the community, but using laws that we actually can enforce. The other part to this is, in 2019, when we brought the hate crime forward, I had some of the best conversations with the community. I had some of the best conversations with folks sharing with me why it was important to make sure the language, especially the hate intimidation language, was added in there. You know the difference between that and where we are today here? Is the difference is that the community, the advocates for this, went around and got cities involved. Thirteen cities in the state of South Carolina signed on. We don't have a state hate crime. Do not. But we do. I think the other thing that was very shocking for me is how quickly rumor mills get out and how people make innuendos about what they think. I even read some stuff to me that probably make a pretty good Netflix series, and I might copyright it because it may come back one day. But the reality is, is this is about discussion. It's about how do we move forward? How do we protect many? How do we protect all the other citizens who are going to be affected by $3.7 million plus? It's a real discussion because it's not just 3.7 million. Could potentially be a lot more. How do we create the balance to make sure that we are doing what we said? Well, I think our commitment here is by far that. But what's been disappointing is, is that people calling in the middle of the night, people threatening my family, people calling and not even knowing what they were calling about. But I think what probably really bothered me the most in this whole conversation of everything is not one person offered up another alternative, not another way that we could work together to make sure we protect a community, because you're not protected right now. Religious organizations have every right to do what they do according to the law and this ordinance. A licensed therapist could be in a doughnut hole in Columbia, they could be in West Columbia, they could be in Thing, doesn't change it around it because, once again, there's only one city. Only one city. Two hundred and seventy-one cities in the state of South Carolina, forty-six counties, So I think for us, we want to make sure we protect the community. The same time, we want to protect the whole community. So it leaves us in a quandary of where we go, what we do, and how we handle it. And this is the time where... I didn't vote for this the first time. I'm not going to lie about it, no reason to. And the reason was because we're overreaching. We don't have the authority. We're not the licensing folks. And we voted on an ordinance that has no teeth. But I can't have any part of our community feeling vulnerable. So what do we do? How do we move forward? I think that's probably, for me personally, one of the things that I found is, I know there are other ways to protect a community. Also know that there are other ways to deal with this, and we're going to have to figure it out and find it out. But I think people need to understand, because people saying we're leveraging the hospitality tax, once again, false statement. We cannot have dealt with our budget, and our city manager is going to talk about the impact of the budget and what we've done and why. But we had to do it so that we can move forward. And wherever the chips fall, we're going to have to deal with that. But we needed to make sure we had a balanced budget moving forward. That's what we have to do. Where that money ends up coming from, shifting or somewhere else, we're all going to have to take responsibility for, if that's the case. But I think with that, I think there's an opportunity. And I want to be frank, this council has done a lot in this city. A lot. It has done a lot to make it one of the best cities, growing, people moving here, and will continue to do that. And sometimes we're going to agree and sometimes we're not going to agree. And I'm sorry, that's called life. But it's how we do it. And I hope that those folks who decided to really step beyond what I call comfort, and I'm going to give those folks an opportunity to reel back some of the things that they did. If they don't, then maybe I'm going to prosecute them using the same hate crime. Because I'm going to tell you, I think the opportunity here is before us to continue to move this city forward in a smart and thoughtful way. Ms. City Manager, I'd like you to talk a little bit about the budget so that people understand, and then we'll move from there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, and our Assistant City Manager for Strategic Initiatives, Ms. C. Kaufman, who oversees our budget process, putting the budget together every year as Budget Director with me, can help fill in the blanks. But it's really quite simple and unfortunate. And I really always like talking to people. I hate my back is turned because what we normally do this time of the year is try to educate the public on the budget process. There is statutory requirements, like the mayor mentioned, where we will come to the community, as we're intending to still do, on June the 10th and June 17th for a public hearing, a first reading, a second reading of our budget, so that people understand the budget and what is all entailed with it. It's my responsibility as the city manager to present to the council a balanced budget. State law requires that of me. It requires that we advertise, as many of you may have seen ironically in the paper with some of the articles about this whole, I've been calling it honestly, a political hot potato and unfortunate intersection, in my opinion, of where we are as a community and our values with fiscal responsibility. But on April the 23rd is when that intersection occurred, when there was a choice made to attach this very important discussion that we're having of values and how people are treated and how we are compassionate, but very strategically attach it to the funding of the City of Columbia. It was intentional, and as soon as that amendment happened on the floor of the Senate, and I have, I've used to be a lobbyist, I've worked the House, I've worked the Senate, I've worked the lobby for many years as an advocate. And so I have many calls that day. And now in my role, you know, I go to the State House as needed, but if I show up, people usually know something's going on with the City of Columbia, and I feel compelled to be there. And so I got many calls, including Senator Devine, who, when I got there in the lobby with our lobbyists, was informing me of what was occurring. And I asked, can I please maybe try to talk to, you know, whomever is feeling that this attachment to the city's budget will make a difference? Because, not because I'm trying to sway or make a pitch to the senator at the time that he shouldn't stand for what he believed in, but please let's not conflate the issue when tying, it's a simple thing of tying even right now for us to get a budget passed, and we wouldn't even have the opportunity to work on, even if we wanted to, make some of these moves that you're asking of us, there's no time literally to do it. You have to advertise, you have to have two readings, and so on and so forth. And so this compressed timeframe that the council now finds themselves in is another layer of this issue that's occurring about this discussion of our values. And so I was told that, you know, I probably couldn't be heard on that. And I knew then what is playing itself out right now is that our community was going to get confused, they were not going to understand when it came down to it, that whatever decision the council makes about a repeal, it's going to still be conflated with our budget. And our budget must be passed in time before July 1, on the deadline, the timeline we're on right now, a first public hearing, which I'm actually getting to have some of these discussions on the general fund unbeknownst to me ahead of June 10th, and then a first and second reading June 10th and June 17th. Simply put, the $3.7 million of aid to subdivision or local government funding that we normally would be receiving is a gaping hole in the general fund of the city if we don't have it. And the general fund of the city funds the core city functions. Your trash being picked up, your public safety needs, operating our parks, maintaining infrastructure. So I know this might sound very simple, but for children that are listening, or for parents, or anyone who maintains a household, it's like your budget for your household. If someone one day, one day said, "Your income's being cut, and you're not going to get X amount of funds that you normally depend upon," then you would then probably, I would imagine, most of us being responsible or trying to be, you would say, "Okay, well, I got to still pay for gas, I got to still buy my groceries, I got to still pay tuition for my child," or whatever those essential functions might be, your medicine in your household. But you might have a vacation fund, and so you would probably say, "Okay, I'm going to have to take from a vacation fund this year, unfortunately, to help fill that void." That's what I feel like right now. Because I know that the hospitality tax dollars of our city funds some really wonderful cultural opportunities, events for our families, our parks, all kinds of wonderful things, but they're going to have to be treated like they're the icing on the cake. And we're going to have to use that funding, because I can't in my heart of hearts make other recommendations out the gate to the council to cut core city functions that we just described. Or personnel, people in the field every day protecting and serving and cleaning up and doing all the things that make our city whole. So I just wanted to be able to express how this has impacted me personally at a time when normally our city budget is, you know, I've been doing this a minute, and, you know, I feel like we are always fiscally responsible. We try to be with how we budget, we sharpen our pencil pretty sharp. And the budget that we are about to present for the general fund on June the 10th is already almost 3%, might be over 3% less than last year's budget, because we've absorbed so many things this year due to wonderful growth and things that we're doing in the city that I hope people see and feel. But to continue that trajectory, we are also being responsible with how we do it. But there's no room in the general fund to replace $3.7 million. And I say that with all sincerity. I hate we're in the place that we are. I know that, obviously, from the time it has taken us to get here today, to even have these conversations, that this is weighing on this council as it should. And whatever they decide to do, I hope that the community who's here knows that they really have a willingness to try to work still on this issue. And it may mean that the ban's repealed, but they're going to want to work with you all to figure it out, or it may mean that it's not repealed. I don't know where, I don't know what the decision will be. But if it's not repealed, as a professional who's been dictated to by the state that we won't have that funding, I'm going to follow their lead on that. And I'm going to have to make some very harsh recommendations as a good financial steward of the city's funds. And I just hope that people will understand what that's going to look like and what that means. And so that's why we're having this discussion, and if there are any questions about that today, we're happy to answer them. I think a nice person over the weekend, FOIA'd, you know, submitted some FOIA requests about over the last few weeks, what are the, submit the documents on, you know, how you are going to deal with the budget because of, you know, you're going to take from the hospitality. No, that's, I can't give you that because there haven't been those discussions. There's been no conspiracy theory about this. This was totally dropped on us in a way that I've never seen before, and in a way that has required us to make a very hard decision off the cuff. It's not something that anyone had planned for. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam City Manager. With that, I know that people have signed up, and we're going to go ahead and allow those folks to speak. I ask you to make sure you state your name for the record, your address as well, just so we know. With that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. So the first to speak? The first to speak will be Bob Liming.
First and foremost, I don't hear well, I don't see well, but your problem is my mouth still works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Having spent 50 years of my life in federal, state, county, local government, I know what you go through. Your decisions are not easy. They're not simple. I wonder how many people who were here at the hearing last, listened to all the zoning requests you had and the complaints? I'll bet you each one of you get complaints constantly about garbage, about roads or lights. But I wonder how many people in this room know that, Mr. Mayor, your predecessor, the former mayor, voted against... the former mayor, voted against the adoption of this ordinance. Not on moral grounds, not on faith issues, not on hate, not on love, but because he was very concerned about the legal ramifications that might befall the city of Columbia. That's how much he loved the city. So I would ask you, I know it's a difficult decision, but we do not need this ordinance. There are state and federal laws that protect all of us. And yes, I have great sympathy. And my heart aches for those people who have suffered under misguided, misleading therapy. But it's not one side. I don't wish to share the details, but in my own family, secular counselors have asked a member of my family and encouraged encourage them to do something that I believe is not acceptable, an alternative lifestyle. Do I love that family member any less? No, no, not at all, Mr. Mayor, not at all, council members. But it's not an emotional issue. It's a factual issue that people need to make choices on their own. And I hope you will let us make those choices, whatever they may be, whether we agree with them or whether we disagree with them. But this city does not need to ban or advocate for a specific type of therapy. Thank you. I hope you will repeal this action.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Rusty DePass.
Guess this is the day for cripples, uh, here in, in the council. I appreciate this opportunity. I have a, um, oh, oh, excuse me, my name and address? Do I need to give that? Okay, all right, gosh, that's scary. Um, my, my message to the council, each one of you, is very, very simple. And that is whatever, um, efficacy you believe, uh, may exist in conversion therapy or may exist, uh, you may believe that it does not have any efficacy. My message to you is that you would save yourselves and the city of Columbia a lot of grief and, um, and a lot of financial problems, um, particularly for us embattled taxpayers, uh, if you would repeal this ordinance. This is not an appropriate thing for the city to get involved in, uh, regardless of how you feel. And, uh, and I would urge you, each one of you, to, uh, vote to repeal it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mark Cheslack.
I pass.
Kaitlyn Keith. I'm sorry, Mother Caitlyn Keith.
Do I need to give my address and all that? I'd like to begin with just a quick comment to the gallery. I'm a priest and a preacher, so I can't help myself. Says in the Catholic scriptures, in the Book of Wisdom, Chapter 11, "God, if you hated it, you wouldn't have created it." I want you all to hear me when I say, "God did not make you to hate you." And I wanted to be sure that after what I heard last week, today you heard a priest say that to you. My name is Mother Caitlyn Keith. I'm an Episcopal priest here in Columbia. My church hosted the city's official Pride Mass last year and we partner with Reformation Lutheran on the Safe Space Diners for housing insecure LGBTQ youth. I was here last week but chose not to testify because I thought the folks you most needed to hear from were the people who were directly affected in their personal lives by this type of therapy. But I realized sitting there that I was watching kind of a cruel and unusual parade. A parade of people's worst traumas and deepest spiritual and psychological wounds. I don't know and could not do it if in your seat, how so many of you remain stoic. It hurt my heart. I was horrified and decided that I needed to appeal to you today. Paul writes in Romans echoing Isaiah that governmental authority is given by God, is sacred trust. And with that trust, greater judgment in how those in power administer justice, especially to society's most vulnerable. Or as Jesus said, "Let your yes be yes and your no be no." Unique in a democracy like ours is that your leadership of our city is not God-ordained by your name, but by the trust cast with every vote for your name by all of us and by those who live in your districts. We are here because we trust you. We trust you to safeguard the liberty and happiness of the most vulnerable among us, to safeguard our public health. But I also wonder, if we acquiesce on this, what authority will be rested from our city next? Now I imagine, this is not my first rodeo, that each of you has already decided what you intend to vote. But I felt compelled to stand here as a priest and still appeal to your conscience today and beg you to make a moral vote. Do not let your morality be extorted, do not let your conscience be bought, do not betray your moral compass, do not betray the trust of your people and the trust that my God has put in you. And, uh, I'm not from around here. My little bit of an accent is from Colorado, the rural part of Colorado. But I hear that our state motto is, "While I breathe, I hope." A lot of people here are holding their breath, hoping that God may sway your heart to let your yes be yes and our no be no. Please listen. And please, I beg you, never again let this beautiful hall become a parade route for watching trauma. Thank you.
Sam Kennedy?
Good afternoon, Council, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to express my sincere apologies that people threatened your family. That is unacceptable and it should not have happened. Sure.
Shouldn't happen to anybody, sir. Nobody.
Of course not. I'd initially come up here planning to give a fiery speech about the First Amendment and how this ordinance doesn't violate it. And everything that I would have said is still true, but it seems to me like what most concerns you is not the First Amendment, it's whether or not this is practical. It's the pragmatics of whether or not this ordinance should continue and whether or not you have the authority to enact it or to keep it going. Mr. Mayor, you referenced the Ethics and Diversity Act of 2022 and described how it preempts any act of any city to try and regulate healthcare. The thing is statute, interpreting statutes is rarely clear-cut. They have to be taken in context. And that entire law, taken as a whole? It's not about preemption, it's about preserving the right of providers to not provide care that they disagree with. It's about preserving a negative right, so that if a doctor doesn't wanna give a procedure, he doesn't have to. It has nothing to do with conversion therapy or whether or not you have the power. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It has nothing to do with whether or not you have the authority to regulate conversion therapy in this instance. The last thing that I wanna mention is this is really an act of financial legislative extortion. We have local government for a reason. It's so that you can address the needs of the people who are here. And where will it end if you capitulate? At what point will legislators who disagree with your position seek to take more power from you to do what is right for your people? I represent the ACLU, so obviously I don't want you to repeal this ordinance. I hope you understand that you have the authority to keep it going and that you continue to protect LGBTQ youth. Thank you.
Ms. Christine Paccasi?
I'm really, really anxious. I'm sorry. My name is Christine Paccasi and I'm the Executive Director for the Harriet Hancock Center. I told you a few weeks ago, we're the LGBTQ Resource Center that resides in District 3. The first city council meeting, I provided you with a letter with 429 signatures asking you to maintain the ban. And last Tuesday, our advocacy coordinator provided a conversion therapy fact sheet that highlighted the immense impacts on queer youth's mental health, suicide rates attributed to undergoing conversion therapy, as well as the broader economic impact to the LGBTQ community. And here we are a third time. There's nothing new that I can share with you about the work our center does or the stories that we've heard from the community, but I can invite you to have dinner with us. We host a Sunday supper, the first Sunday of the month, most months of the year. We take some time off in the summer and we take time off in December. This is our monthly opportunity to get together, catch up, share information with local organizations, create opportunities for new connections. And I'd encourage you to take time out of your schedule this Sunday, this weekend, to join us and get to know those that you govern, many of which couldn't be here because of work and the time, but have called and emailed you. So for your calendar, it's this Sunday from 5 to 7. And our Director of Marketing Communications, who also happens to be my partner, is making burgers. June's Sunday supper is also sponsored by Reformation Lutheran Church. You said that we should work together, and I agree. But no one's personal beliefs should be used to push forward hate-based legislation that strips away basic protections for our queer youth. And that's what repealing this ordinance does. The decision to repeal this ordinance also creates more distrust with the government during a time when our community is already under attack. And I really wish that we had more trust among us. Maintaining the ban on conversion therapy and work with us mend the fear and the distrust that has been created in our city among our LGBTQ residents, our queer youth, and our allies that are here in this room. And I hope that I get to see you at dinner this Sunday.
Matthew Butler.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Matthew Butler, also with the ACLU. I want to, uh, thank you for sharing that timeline and your thoughts. Certainly, I do believe then the blame should be at Chairman Bannister's feet and he owes members of this council an apology for misrepresenting your position. And I hope that you guys do reach out to him and demand a public apology from Chairman Bannister for saying that. I'm here to say that, you know, the city still has options. The city still has options. The city can work with advocates to reach out to Governor McMaster's office and ask for a veto. This ordinance, I would like to, to push back a little bit on what you said, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is not just symbolic. The city did what the city could do under current law in the state. It's still worth having on the books. We are talking about the regulation of interventions by licensed professionals, folks that actually pay you business license fees and taxes to be in the city to open their businesses and be a part of the community. So we want them to know that this is a type of intervention and, and action that this city does not approve. And, you know, a fine of $500 civilly might sound like just so little. But for this community and the LGBTQ community across the state, it means the world. It's what you can do for us. We want you guys to do more. We would love to help you guys do so much more. We know that we can only do what we are constrained by the law to do. But there are options, I just want to repeat, there are options. This proviso, the political theater, the palace intrigue. There's still time and there's still options. We could come together and we can ask the governor to veto. That preserves the city of the funding. So I ask you to do that. Will you and the rest of council petition our governor to veto this provision 113.10?
PJ Whitehurst?
Hello. My name is PJ Whitehurst. I'm the community health worker at Reformation Lutheran Church. I know you've heard me and seen me up here many times and I'm sure you're tired of it, but, um, one of the things that I will say is, um, I just have a story to share with you, something that if, if we do, you know, we prayed earlier, we, we've talked about religion, we've talked about God. And if, as a person of faith who, who believes in that and believes in those signs, I believe that this was laid on my heart two days ago and now I'm here today. I had a, a kid that I was actually taking home from church and he started sharing parts of his story with me and that usually happens a lot of times. And what he said to me was very disturbing. It was hard to hear. It's not the first time that I've heard stories like this. I know I've shared stories with you before. But when he told me about how, when he came out to his family and his family took turns on him, beating him to a pulp, I realized that there was a purpose of me being here today to talk about, um, what I wanted to say. And so my only questions are, where is our humanity? Where is, are we gonna make the decision of dollars for children? Because every day, my life, every day, all I hear every day for the past 10 years of my life working with children is every single story. Every story of them coming to me as a person of comfort, as a person who is safe, and then me having to go back to them and say, hey, this is the only thing that I can do for you. Because they won't do for you, but I will do for you. So that's my only question today is, are we gonna trade dollars for children? Thank you.
Susan Hazel?
Hello, I'm sorry, my blood sugar is like dropping. So, uh, I'm a little shaky, that's what, that's what that's about. I've never been to one of these city council meetings and somebody asked for my address. I actually lived at the old state mental hospital that they turned into apartments, that the fire alarms have been going off for the last year and a half. And y'all, if you're working on that, we sure would love to hear about that. But that's not why I'm here today. I'm here for, because I've got a lot of LGBTQ friends and, but I'm also a remote worker. I don't need, need to stay in the state of anymore, but I've been here for 20 years in energy, various contexts. various contexts. I don't need to, I could go to another cheaper state where my income tax is lower, but I stay here because I love the city, I love the people. I love that since I've been here, there's been kindness from people who are on the more progressive side, people who are on the more conservative side, because it seems like in Columbia, we meet in the middle and we treat each other as our brothers, sisters, first friends, siblings, keeper. But what I wanted to also say was that, you know, if you repeal this ban, you don't just affect people subjected to what is essentially a re-education practice. Giving their parents the okay to, you know, make their own decisions for their kids is one thing, but, you know, when we have tertiary outsourcing to organizations that, you know, take that kid out of their home, off to a third-party site, re-educate them there, where does that stop? We sell out for cash. You're also de facto opening the door to a form of, I don't know, state-sanctioned re-education camps for anyone with an ideology, political party allegiance, religion, or anyone else considered guilty of thinking of, guilty of wrong think. So we're talking about incrementalism here. This is just the first step. What's to stop the arbiters above at the state level from taking this as just an entry point? Now, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you don't seem like a pushover, and I understand that there are budgetary reasons to just let this one go. But, you know, there's a lot of corporate interests in this town that are on the Fortune 500. And there's Dominion Energy, there's always been, I was a former employee there. They have programs for their employees for LGBTQ. There are other companies in this town with offices. Scout Motors is maybe going to put their headquarters here. It would be sure a great thing to maybe ask them to see if they might, you know, because they have some programs for members of the community that represent people in this room. What can they do to help the city? It's 64 degrees today. I feel the air conditioning on. I don't know about you, Sall, but I'm chilly in this room. Maybe we need to look at the HVAC and see if there's anything we can do to ameliorate that, you know? Get on a budget billing cycle or something. But, you know, we all know you're working hard. We all know that you care about the people here. I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't appreciate what you're doing. But, you know, a few weeks ago, I had to sit for three hours, you know, away from my job, when I saw Nancy Mace testifying against my friend Damian Ludfeld against trans censors on the DOGE Committee. I happen to be a competitive censor, that's why I know him. So these kinds of issues are important to me. And I feel like, you know, if we don't stand up to interests that want to supersede our city and what we do here with the individuals, you let that power go, it will never get it back. Thank you.
James Smith.
Forgive me, I'm deaf, Mr. Mayor. Lost a good bit of my hearing. It is such an honor to be before you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam City Manager, particularly on this important, very important issue. And at the outset, I want you to be clear that, and have no illusion, that our General Assembly has the authority to tell you to repeal this act. They don't have it, period, categorically. They are without the law to do that. And for my friend Rusty, who I've known for many years, who we're all concerned about tax dollars, myself and an army of lawyers are standing here ready to represent the city on a pro bono basis for all of our citizens, because, because when you talk about all the work that you all are doing, which makes our city so special, one of the things that makes it unique and special is, in fact, this ordinance. And the fact that we're the only city isn't necessarily make us suspect, it makes us special about who we are and the values that we care. I want to, I know I don't have a lot of time, but down the list, this violates Home Rule. There is no express or implied exemption under state law for this, period, at all, doesn't exist. They are without authority to do this. I've brought these cases before in our Supreme Court and won them against governors who used the veto power in improper ways, and against counties that have used their power over the money in improper ways. This is not allowed by law or by our Constitution. But let's be clear, conversion therapy is not therapy. It is abuse masquerading as a treatment. And I know we all know that and agree that, and you all, I don't think there's any debate about that. And now we're told by the state of South Carolina that through a temporary budget proviso, that unless this council repeals that ordinance, the city of Columbia will lose millions in state funding. That is morally wrong and it is unlawful. It violates the Home Rule Act, as I mentioned before, there's no preemption. It violates what they're allowed to do in a budget proviso. They simply cannot direct you to take an action which you have independent authority to make your own discretion for your own citizens, as you have already done. There is zero power for them to do that. And don't let them push you in a direction that they don't have the authority to do that. Don't set that precedent. Don't let them get away with this. Stand up to the power of this General Assembly. As a member, as a member of that body for 22 years, I get how important that relationship is. It is imperative, but it begins at a place where we all agree and understand that we're going to act lawfully and according to the Constitution. And if we start there, if they want to repeal this, if they want to not allow it, then they need to go introduce a bill, hold public hearings, pass a law that says that you can't pass this ordinance. And they have not done that. If that's what they want, that's what they need to go do. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Clayton King.
Clayton King.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Madam Council, City Manager. My name is Clayton King. I live in the Earlwood neighborhood. I have been proud to call Columbia home since 2009. I am a local actor, singer, and producer. I am the parish administrator at St. Martin's in the Fields Episcopal Church. I am a former worship leader at Reformation Lutheran Church. I am currently a paid singer at Asbury Memorial United Methodist Church. I'm a husband, I'm a friend, a neighbor, and a voter. I am also a Christian, and I am also a gay man. I am many, many things. One thing I am not, however, is broken or in need of reparative therapy. This is a fact I have known for over 47 years, since realizing I was gay at the age of 15 and coming out in 1978. I will be forever grateful that my family, and in particular, my parents, were supportive and loving and decent in the late 70s. They dealt with my coming out with what can only be described as amazing grace and a true desire to understand their child. While early on in my journey, I would literally pray to God to take this away from me, my brother, who would later become a Presbyterian minister, reminded me, God doesn't make mistakes. There are scientific facts to be considered here. For example, fentanyl kills people. It's illegal. Reparative therapy or conversion therapy kills people. It's been seen. Professor Robert Spitzer of Columbia University in New York, whose study became the benchmark for this practice, recanted his study as false. The National Alliance on Mental Illness considers conversion therapy to be damaging and a discredited practice. The American Psychiatric Association has opposed so-called reparative therapy or conversion therapy since 1998. I am personally aware of half a dozen young people who have died by suicide as a result of conversion therapy. One is too many, let alone six. This is not a matter of free speech. This is not a matter of religious liberty, as Senator Josh Kimbrel of Spartanburg has suggested. It is a blatant attempt to financially city into looking more like his flavor of morality. I was disappointed that this issue came repeal. Now we're here all over again. Columbia is better than this. We can do better than this. We should be a beacon and an example is right and decent to do. I would urge council to set the example and to keep this ban in place so that our youth are protected as they deserve and they need. But doing what is right makes the most lasting impression. Thank you.
Court.
I won't speak as eloquently as some, but I'm moved by the quote, "Speak up even if your voice shakes." There have been threats of violence against the mayor and family. The very purpose of this ordinance is taking a stand against violence, the violence enacted by parents who wish their kids were not gay and are willing to risk their children not be here at all in an attempt to get that. I say that because being subjected to conversion therapy, as many have pointed out, is deadly. LGBT adults to attempt suicide. And I emailed you that citation. I didn't get a response. You speak about jurisdiction issues between the city and LLR, but I just can't imagine that the city would not intervene where there's some doubled people's likelihood to attempt suicide. Columbia needs to continue to protect our young people from the terrible practice of conversion therapy, stand against bullying by parents that is trying to score political points elsewhere.
Okay, so you heard that. My name is Elaine Cooper. I am a Columbia City resident of many years who lives near Daleos Road in Also, I am a heterosexual woman who has been married for about 45 years to a heterosexual man. We have one heterosexual son. I have no skin in the game, but I am led by my faith. My faith has taught me to love those who are not like myself. Columbia, South Carolina is the capital of South Carolina. We should send an unwavering message to all in South Carolina that Columbia does not buckle under any ultra-right-wing conservative agenda. Words matter. Language, and it says, made up of words that reflect our city, even if there is no so-called teeth, do matter. Obviously, this ordinance matters to someone. Some people are threatening to withhold money. Columbia, South Carolina welcomes all to our inclusive city that make so I thought, in a nonpartisan manner. If you repeal this ban on conversion therapy, it will absolutely hurt as it impacts local colleges and universities, be matter. The words that make up ordinances, this is an issue of importance to most young people who would want to go to college here in Columbia. Open a new business in this, if this repeal goes through. I really believe that this story will get national attention. What happened to you all? I voted for you, Mayor, because I thought of you as an honest, nonjudgmental mayor. I worked and believe in several of you council members. What happened to you all? Vote no and continue the ban on conversion therapy.
Irene Bearwald.
I worked on it for the last one, I didn't finish it, so it's got glitter and I'm proud of it, because I'm just like that. I'm going to hand you all of this, and I'm going to apologize in advance. My name is Irene Bearwald. I live in Lexington, South Carolina. And before I go into what I've written, if our current ban holds no teeth, create something that maybe does hold teeth, put it in place, and then repeal the ban, because that way you're doing exactly what is being a even better ban, but you're doing what you're being told to. Now, one of our greatest assets today is Google. National to obtain a massive amount of information on any given topic. This has led to the small forest that I have sacrificed to provide I'm here has heard about how a debate works. Normally, one side is for a position and the other side is against. Now, back in my day, we would have to go to the old-fashioned group and go Today, we have Google to be able to be used for both sides of an argument. Oddly enough, when one types in conversion university studies, studies done in various states by other departments of health, and yes, you will find personal testimonies from survivors of that experience, all that say the same conclusions. Conversion therapy is not only harmful, but is also detrimental in the long term to those who have been forced to go through it, ergo, against conversion therapy. To locate any information showing potential arguments for conversion therapy, I had to search for same-sex attraction. That search brought up different sites and testimonies that were all spiritual-based. There was not one research paper, study, or medical journal in the bunch. I could be wrong, but I was always informed that to provide basis for any argument, one needed to have multiple types of resources. More importantly, all of the testimonies that I read, about 10 of them, there are lots, all said that they were still dealing with same-sex attraction, but now they had the tools to just say no. So what does religion say that are no longer, oh, wait, I'm sorry. In the letter sent by Allen Wilson to the city council, he writes, "My office has steadfastly maintained a position dedicated to safeguarding, upholding, and advancing the rights of South Carolinians to free exercise their respective religious beliefs." So what does religion say that are no longer practiced in modern society? Many people will bring up the rules for clothing and eating, but I'm going to focus on sexual misconduct. Any religion that claims to follow the Old Testament should be free to follow Proverbs Chapter 5:10, without fear of legal repercussions. If a man commits adultery with another man's wife, with the wife of his neighbor, both the adulterer and the adulteress must surely be put to death. The same punishment is also found in several other religions around the world. To follow the First Amendment of the Constitution with Mr. Wilson, and I have gone past my time, and I'm going to be respectful of that, which is why I gave you a copy of my speech.
Meredith Duke.
Is Meredith Duke here? Hey, I got a novel from you already.
Wayne Dawson.
Wayne Dawson? Uh, sir.
Well, um, I didn't actually come here to talk about city budgets and political maneuvering. I thought, you know, I'd like to talk about the actual ordinance that we're talking about repealing. Proponents of the ban on conversion therapy will point to poor little Johnny or Jenny whose parents are trying to browbeat them out of being same-sex attracted, or send them to some emotionally abusive camp to force them somehow not to be gay. And I found out just a little while ago, this ordinance doesn't even apply to them. This doesn't apply to religious organizations, apparently. I didn't realize that. I did read the ordinance, but maybe not the full thing or something, I don't know. I didn't realize it does not even prevent religious organizations that run those camps. Well, I can very definitely, very much understand the position against emotional abuse. I'm against emotional abuse, of course. But there's another scenario covered by this ordinance that we're discussing. Suppose my son comes home from school, says, "Dad, I want to join the girls' track team." And I say, "But, son, you're not a girl." Now suppose he says, "But that's how I identify now." Well, in my opinion, and I know there will be a lot of disagreement here, but in my opinion, thankfully, South Carolina passed the Save Women's Sports Act three years ago. But here's where the ordinance comes in. I've actually read the ordinance itself. Again, maybe I missed something, but if I even discuss with my son the idea that it's not possible for him to be a girl, well, the way the ordinance is written, I am guilty of, quote, "conversion therapy," end quote. But these are two completely different scenarios. Sending a child off to some camp where they're going to try to force them not to be gay anymore is completely and utterly different, nothing to do with, oh, my son thinks he's a girl. Okay, they're totally different. That being true, this ordinance is deeply flawed and it should be repealed.
Zane Brandies.
Um, hi, I'm Zane. I identify as a trans male. Um, we're here talking about the state legislature to unban conversion therapy. Lifting conversion therapy is, sorry, I'm new to this.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, I wanted to speak from both personal experiences and a broader reality faced by the LGBTQ+ community. I've had minor exposure to conversion therapy, and I can tell you, it doesn't change who we are, how we experience things, how we feel about things, whether we're trans, whether we're gay, whether we're lesbian, anything like that. It just makes us suppress who we are and go through a lot of trauma in the process. Youth who undergo conversion therapy are more than two and a half times more likely to attempt suicide. That's not a risk any of you or any of us should be willing to take. It's deeply ironic that lawmakers claim to be bettering our community while passing bills that actually harm our youth. By even considering this, you're forcing young people to hide even more than they already do. Are you afraid of gay people, lesbians, trans individuals, or anyone else in the LGBTQ community or that are different? Because this bill won't erase us. It will only lead to more youth suicides and mental health struggles. And this isn't just about me, it's about everybody in the LGBTQ+ community. When you pass laws that target us, you're sending a message that we don't belong, that we should be erased, that makes life a whole lot more dangerous for those of us who refuse to hide. We deserve the freedom to transition, the right to access care, and the ability to make decisions about our own bodies and lives. We deserve to live openly, to love who we love, and to be who we are without fear. We need policies that support our autonomy, dignity, and well-being, not laws that restrict our lives and futures. Stand with us, protect us, let us live as our true, authentic selves. Thank you.
Mayor Rickman, counsel, city manager, thank you. I want to, again, the only thing I'm going to repeat from what I said last time was how much I appreciate the fact that this ban was put in place to begin with. So thank you for that. And Mayor Rickman, I want to say I definitely do not condone what you've told me has happened to you, but I don't think that should happen in any instance.
I agree with you.
But you did say one thing that I do want to talk about, and you said in those conversations, no one really provided you with the alternative or an option. And I'm here today to provide something that I've not heard yet that may be an option. Because I read the Attorney General's letter to city council, and that inspired me to go do some research. Initially, I was looking for any kind of precedent or anything like that. Very quickly, I came across an article that told me that the U.S. Supreme Court in March already agreed to take up this issue in a Colorado case. I think it's
Twenty next year, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's coming up in the next session, which I believe begins in October. I think that it would be prudent, since what they are deciding is the very issue we're talking about here, is to wait and let the Supreme Court rule on this. Otherwise, you're running the risk of wasting a lot of people's time. Everybody here, everybody behind me? Let's find out what the law of the land is going to be as decided by the U.S. Supreme Court. And I think that that can be used to help solve your budget problem because that too should be decided based on what was written in the letter to you. Things cited in that letter are things being decided by the Supreme Court. So actually, that threat, the proviso, really should be made to be held off until the Supreme Court rules. So I offer to you to please wait, let the Supreme Court rule on this. Either don't take up a vote on this, or vote to keep things as they are and let the Supreme Court decide it. It is the very same case. It is about whether it's free speech or whether it is conduct by a professional in an office setting. Don't decide it, let them do it. Go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I came to say today is not necessarily applicable in the same way. There's not really any more facts or data that I could present to you that I haven't already presented to you or had conversations with you about, or really anybody else that's been here. I want to talk to you about feelings. You know, I want to say very clearly again what many have already said, that I'm sorry for what you endured as a human being. If you have any, if any of you have received threats or condemnation from the LGBTQ community, let me say clearly, that is not spoken on behalf of our community at large. Nobody deserves that. To fight fire with fire is not the answer, and it's not the way of Jesus. But my feeling here today, as you ask for dialogue and discourse, is I quite frankly feel like a teenager who's being chastised for speaking out and standing up for what I believe is right. I want to reiterate what I said last time, that I'm not here to condemn any of you for the difficult decision you are being forced into by the state, but I am asking you to stand up for what's right in the face of an oppressive government that feels like they can dangle something in front of you and decide what's best for our city. And so what I feel today is a sense of disregard. I feel a sense of being asked to be pulled into the dialogue, but then being told all the reasons why the dialogue doesn't matter. What I feel today is a deep sense of regret that I've continued to feel since we passed the ban in 2021, that we went and celebrated and we didn't finish the fight. I live with that. You don't have to remind me, I hate the fact that we didn't continue this, to all the cities across the state. That's how deeply I believe in this. I stand here with a feeling of remorse because in 2021, I felt a sense of pride. It is really damn hard to live in this state as a queer person. I don't say that with any sense of just reminding you that unless you are, you don't know. It is hard to live here, and in 2021, I was proud of my city. I just want to keep being proud of my city. I just want to keep feeling safe in a city when I don't feel safe in the state. I want to stop begging my friends to stop moving away. I want to feel some sense of normalcy and frickin' reconciliation in this state for my community. And so I want to say, I know I'm coming up on time, but our organization, SC Pride, we had a special meeting on Sunday to prepare for budget cuts that could come. We know, we're prepared for this. I'm not here to fight against that, I'm actually here to fight with you on that. We know the ramifications of what could happen should you stand up for what's right. But the reality is, you all could vote today to repeal this and walk away, and we could be done with it. So draw us into it, please. Don't remind us the things that are wrong with what we did or didn't do, because I repeat what I said last time, it's not about the teeth of the ordinance, it's the message that you're sending to the future. Thank you.
James Agins or Agins, James Agins.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for meeting today. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about this. And before I get to what I was planning to say, I did want to echo that there are a lot of options, like Matt Butler said, and I think that the city needs to take stance and that there's other options besides repealing this. And Mayor, you did mention that there were a lot of people did not offer solutions to this, and my email is james@seequality.org, and I'd welcome anybody else in the community to sit down and come up with a solution that would provide teeth to this ordinance or provide some more protections. And what I would like to say about this is I stand before you wearing many hats, each of which leads to the same urgency and the conclusion that repealing this ordinance would harm our community's moral fabric, our economic vitality, and the spirit of inclusion. As the Executive Director of SC Equality, it raises red flags that our city would even consider rolling back something like this. It shields vulnerable young people from discredited abusive practices, and no matter the political pressure, sacrificing our safety, sacrificing the safety of our youth is just simply wrong. And as a board member of South Carolina Pride Movement, it's honestly puzzling. Columbia has been such a leader and the region's beacon of welcoming. SC Pride hosts many events, including the annual famously hot Pride Parade and Festival, which draws tens of thousands of people to Columbia, because not only is it safe, but it's home, and it's also showing people that we're here to thrive. And repealing this sends the exact opposite message, that Columbia condones coercion rather than celebrating our diversity. As an international business student at Darla Moore, there have been business case after business case that shows that policy drives investment decisions. For example, in 2016, PayPal was planning to move to Charlotte, North Carolina, their headquarters, one of the largest, one of the larger financial companies in the world. And it caused such chaos with the North Carolina legislature that it took years for them to really invest in North Carolina. And I suggest the city look at this the same way. It's not appealing to businesses to come to a city where they don't protect diverse communities. And as a small business owner myself, I've witnessed Columbia's entrepreneurial spirit firsthand. My business, Terracotta Nursery, began as a hobby when I lost my job during COVID. And it's grown into a small but mighty business. And I say that because Columbia shows up for itself. Columbia backs and supports Columbia, and repealing a ban like this undermines the fundamental protections and the community trust. As an experienced Columbia ambassador and a lifelong resident of Columbia, I know that our city is on the rise. Drawn upon the top universities, we have major sporting events, we have a vibrant cultural scene. This ordinance is a statement of who we are as a city, and a city committed to dignity, respect, and the opportunity for all, and a repeal would betray this promise. I know I'm over my time, and I think that Columbia is the only city, because we're a leader and we're the capital city, and if that makes us stand out and it makes us, and that repealing this would set us back and be like every other city, so I suggest we act like the capital city and keep this ordinance.
Jared Johnson.
How are you? Hello, I'm Jared Johnson, and I'll make this brief. I think, what I think, I know, you're two removed. If you run in conservative circles, or if you assign yourself or take on being a Republican, you are having conversations about, oh, this bill could be stronger. There's no illusion of those who will be directly impacted, who are more liberal, or those within the LGBTQ, this law could be better, so we're aware of that. Yes, it's an election year. Leadership is important. It's not about social media, it's not about, oh, this is difficult. And Madam Manager, thank you for going to the State House and understanding the implications of having a balanced budget. You're incredible. We're aware of that. Leadership also means fighting. It's not about, I'm smiling, I'm here, it's this or that. It's not about even being amongst yourselves and having polite conversation, it means fighting, and it doesn't mean sacrificing a marginalized group or minorities in order to appease a larger group. If anything, like I said about the bill and so many who said, make it stronger, find creative ways to make the bill better, find creative bills to protect those who are under attack, the marginalized, that comes with leadership. Find cool ways to fight. You fight for ways to fund your campaign, you fight for ways to get, you know, your agendas pushed through. Incredible. Apply that effort to those who actually need it. It's not about you all the time, it's not about a platform, it's about the people, and they need you to fight for them. You can't justify, I don't care if it's $1 or a billion dollars, sacrificing one group because the law could be better when they know that, and saying, well, I got to look out for everybody. If you want to look out for everybody, If you want to look out for everybody, do that, get creative. What you can't do, reach out to those who can do, whether it's going to, you know, Burnett Shut McDaniel, talking to him, what can we do legally? My counterpart, Clint Wallace, he's one of the prominent tax law minds, and you have access to him, he's one of the co-owners of all good books. There are people willing and ready to help you fight. The question is, will you fight? And going beyond addressing you and just having dialogue, the people are watching. This won't be done. People already have noticed, why are they not fighting as much or indicating they're going to fight? Are they coming to Pride? Are they going to Sunday dinners? Are they finding ways to get to know communities in a real, genuine way, and not just when I want their vote or when I want their money? This isn't just an issue about power and, you know, the current State House trying to supersede that, it's about, what are you going to do with the position? Are you going to fight? Are you going to have intimate ways to get to know them better? You can get to know us better if you just try, and it will teach you how to fight for us and stand up for us, and I hope you vote to keep the current ban and make it better.
My name is Kim Felth, I'm here from West Columbia. It's not so easy to speak at these meetings, this is the second time that I've had to revise half my speech based on the content of the meeting. So, out with paragraph one, and in its place, I would like to say the thank you that I should have said to all of you the last time you met. Thank you very much for your devotion and for your hard work, and I am so sorry that you find yourselves in the position that you do. It, it's very unfortunate. You're not alone, you're, you're unfortunately with a lot of company, but I'm terribly sorry for what you've gone through in this process. I think that the testimony presented and the material that's been presented over time shows that conversion therapy does more harm than good, and that's why the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and the American Psychological Association have not supported it. And evidently, the majority of the community does not support it either, which I think has been evident. I don't believe that it is against the Constitution or against accepted medical treatment to have this law. Medical obligation is to first do no harm. So that leaves us in yet another situation where a small group of people with a little bit of money and power wish to impose their will on the entire population. The majority of medical evidence and the law are not with them. Please do not allow this. From the top of our nation down, leaders have abandoned the majority position because of money and power. We need our leaders to stand up and speak for us. And before I get nervous and forget to say this, if, if there is something the community can do to help you in this situation, I would love for you to find a way, as awkward as it is to communicate that, if there is a way for the community to support you. Just because you stand alone doesn't mean you're wrong. So, let's not give these mice a cookie. And I think there may be a large group of people not voting for the people who are running for governor. Thank you.
Lisa Fouchet, if I said that correctly?
I know, 44, okay, thank you. Raya Mark.
She has a lead.
Right, thank you. Ms. Rosie Craig. Jessica Thomas.
Ms. Ford is here.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Hi, my name's Arianna Ford. I live in the Arcadia Lakes. I was here at the last meeting, this is my first time speaking, so I'm a little nervous.
Thank you, Tom.
I don't want to necessarily talk about my experiences, but I do want to implore our council members to reach out for community fundraising. It would be a shame, it would be a really big shame if we, as a city, bend to the will of, of Alan Wilson, our general attorney, he does not have our best interests in mind. He does not have Christian youth in mind, he does not have even these adults in the churches in mind. I, and, I believe that everyone should be able to practice their religion the way they want, but it comes to a certain point when, when we are telling children specifically that in order to follow the Word of God, that we have to not be gay. That's not the case. You can follow God, you can be gay, you can be lesbian, you can be trans. I don't follow God, only because of religious members in the church who keep telling me, or who have told me in the past that I can't exist the way I am and be a part of the church. And I'm okay with that, I'm okay, and I think LGBT people should be able to participate in the church without having to change their sexuality, their gender, or how they identify. It is, it is, it gets to a point where even if this is a symbolic measure, it, it's very disappointing to even say it like that, but if this is a, a symbolic ban, uphold the symbol and work on a proper ban, work on something that will actually protect LGBTQ. Religious freedom should not be used to further hurt and harm individuals, including kids, adults, and the elderly. It is a shame that the church keeps having more and more power in our politics every single day. It is a shame that we are praying for our country. You guys are praying for us in these meetings, but you don't want us to participate in these prayers. I really, really would like for these rhetorics to change around how people should exist and why this ban needs to be upheld, even if it's just a symbol. Let it be a symbol and work on something better.
Jessica Thomas.
Hi, thank you for having me again. I just want to say that I am tired, very, very tired of watching this country be run like a cold and calculating business. That goes for Columbia too. We are not a brand, we are a community of real people, not profits. I personally expect my government to be a public service, and public service is not about numbers, it's about care, okay? It's about having the guts to say we will not abandon the most vulnerable among us, no matter how politically inconvenient that might be, or financially. I want my government to care, to have decency, and to fight for our basic human dignity for all Americans. I'm tired of being told to accept crumbs and just okay policies from my elected officials. If, um, sorry, we are living through a moment of escalating uncertainty, not just nationally, but right here at home in Columbia. That's not lost on me, it's, it's literally everywhere. I get online, I turn on the TV, I talk to my family, and it's all the same, a new headline, a new fear, a new wedge, you know, something to, I don't know, be more divisive between all of us. And in times like this, when everything feels so fragile, every decision, every vote is a test, a test of who we want to be, or where we want to go, or where we want our city to go. Now, I don't think this was some shadowy plot by City Council to repeal the ban, but now the city is involved, the ban is real, maybe it doesn't have teeth. Either way, it matters to the people who are afraid, and it matters to the people who came here today. The people who don't, there are people who don't see behind the curtain of performatory politics that always seem to show up just in time for campaign season. This ban matters to them, and I'm not here to argue your intentions, I'm here to speak on the impact, and the impact is clear, more fear, more confusion, and more pain, for our neighbors, for our families, for our youth. Let's be real, you're not just being asked to represent, it's being demanded by us. The public has spoken, and overwhelmingly so, we want this ban upheld. If that messes with a few bottom lines in the budget, I'm sympathetic for the extra work, but I won't apologize for asking you to put people over profit. This is about our LGBTQ plus youth, many of whom are terrified, literally terrified, it's that simple. Some of whom are contemplating whether this city, this life, this life, emphasis on that, has room for them in it. You referenced that you don't appreciate your way of life being threatened, but LGBTQ plus individuals can often face that challenge every single day. I ask you to consider what it feels like to grow up in a city that won't lift a single finger to protect your basic dignity. So when you vote, because I hope to God some of you are still on the fence, don't think about politics, don't think about the dollars or your own personal beliefs, I ask you to think about the humanity in this city, the humanity and the children in this city. This is our chance to be the one city in South Carolina that says loudly and clearly, we protect our people, all of our people, no exceptions.
Mayor, last but not least, this Councilwoman, Allison Teraschio.
Hi, everybody, I won't speak long. I just wanted to say that I come here today to stand in solidarity with my friends that have spoken so eloquently, I would implore you to maybe take some of their suggestions. I want to stand in solidarity with my neighbors and my constituents, and I do serve the area that Harriet Hancock Center is in, and so I'm very well aware of the programs they provide and what they offer to this city. I'll just wrap this up by saying, my own council is dealing with budget right now, and we are looking at potential cuts and restraints, we don't really know what's coming down the pike from the current administration. I will say that one of the things that I have been hearing for the past eight years now, is that when dealing with an authoritarian government, it is important that we not obey in advance, and so I would hope... You guys have been so patient in hearing us all out and in receiving everything that this room has to offer you. I'm, I stand ready to stand with you all and with all of these people in this room, and I look forward to what is next from this council. Thank you.
A couple takeaways that I think we all need to understand. I heard, I think it was PJ spoke earlier, talked several times about kids, but yet, these things aren't being reported, so somewhere there's a breakdown. There's a massive breakdown, because in the last decade, there have been zero reports in the, here, on conversion therapy. Zero reports on abuse. So, we got a problem in communication, because if kids are, what you said earlier, the story about semi-beating, then we ought to be reporting this. So there, there's, there's a bigger issue here, and there's a bigger problem. And, you know, you can be mad at me because I called you out about not chasing and pushing this, because I do believe the hate crime bill that went around carries a lot of teeth, because I'm going to tell you, 13 cities carries a lot of damn weight. But I, I think we got a bigger problem in this community, and it's communication, and it's a two-way street. You can talk about us coming, it's got to be a two-way street, not every time there's an election. That's, that's, that's all of us having conversation. And I, I think that's a point that we want to be a stronger community, we need to do a lot more dialogue, because it's, it's clear to me that I've heard a lot of testimony here about people being abused, and I'm going to tell you, if you look at the statistics and the numbers, it's not there. It's not being reported.
Focus on fighting, that was the overall message.
Yeah, but, I mean, look, I, I'm saying this because the first step is to working together more.
Amen. Focus on fighting.
You got a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to ask a question.
Can you come to the microphone, please, just so we get everything on the record, and those who are listening at home can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you letting me back up here. Again, Sam Kennedy with the ACLU. The question that I want to ask, you know, you, you talk about this breakdown, about how there aren't any reports of this kind of abuse happening, is it possible that it's because this ordinance is working?
You know, I, I guess, Sam, I asked myself the same question. So I went back 10 years, not five years, not four years, not three years, not two years, because it didn't come until late, and I got the same answer, and I guess that's my question is, is if there is abuse, there are things happening, to me, this is, this is about what's going on, because there are a lot of pockets in this city that aren't in the city, right? There's donut holes, and there's other places and all this, but we're not seeing it, and I guess my question is, is I'm more concerned really right this second, is that if things like PJ shared with us and other people shared with us are going on, and they're not being reported, then how are we supposed to do our jobs? Because their ordinance is about abuse happens when people report domestic violence and others, so I think we've got some work to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I ask you a question of staff? How many ca, how many cases have been brought in light of this ordinance that we now have?
Zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, do, do...
But I don't, I, you know, again, I think that has to do with what the mayor's suggesting about reporting, sir, so I, you know, it's, I don't know that that really is a testament to anything necessarily.
The problem that we're just hearing is, is that there, there, things aren't being reported.
No, the problem is...
Uh, 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 we're not, we're not going to be calling people out like that. You want to come speak, you come to the mic. And then, look, I'm going to let two more people speak, and then we're moving forward, because we've, we've gone through and we've listened to everybody.
Right, you opened this can of worms, though, by focusing on one comment, and for the record, I'm back up here, my name is Jared Johnson.
Not one comment, Jared.
Excuse me. The focus, the overall response, not just one thing that will help you or help what you think, because I don't, I can't guess your intentions, but to be clear, the majority of people that came up here focused on wanting you to fight, wanting you to find creative ways to partner with impacted communities, and wanting you to find a way to move us forward and to find a way to make that bill better. No one's saying that PJ or people didn't mention abuse, because that naturally, unfortunately, comes with conversion, but it is not in good faith, and it's not in proper leadership, and it's not within standard of what people expect from a mayor, you to hone in on that one thing.
Not honing on one thing.
Excuse me, I'm not done, you, you're the mayor, you always have a moment to communicate, but you opened this can of worms. If that's a takeaway for you, incredible, make sure people are reporting abuse, but don't conflate something that you personally want to focus on and something that should be addressed with that being the overall message, and then mixing that in and saying there's a breakdown in communication. No, it's a breakdown in focus, and you making sure that you actually listen to people and not pull out one thing that will... not pull out one thing that will give you a veneer or that patina of like, oh, I'm trying to help, but then now I'm going to focus on abuse. No. To be clear, and even if you don't understand it, the majority of the comments of the people here, they want you to fight. You get with PJ about her comment, y'all found ways to report that? Incredible. That's even better. But the mandate that you've heard from the people in this room are wanting you to fight. And if you're confused about that, I'm sure every single person that spoke and that you have access to, because you know a lot of us, they'll be willing to clarify any confusion you have about that.
This is it. All right. Thank you.
Christina Picosi. I'm 36 years old. Just look really good for my age. Something I would ask council to also consider, why don't people come forward? I was sexually assaulted when I was a teenager, 15, 16, and 17. It's okay. I've been in a lot of therapy. It's not, but when you've been in as much therapy as I have been, you've come to terms with it. That also means that I learned that it was abuse when I didn't realize it was when I was 15, 16, and 17. It also means I learned it was manipulation. It was not love. It was none of the things that I thought it was when I was that age. And I can say that as an adult now. It also took me 15 years to talk about that in therapy, even though I had been in therapy at the time of being assaulted. So I would ask you to also consider that. Why don't people come forward? What is shameful about this? What did they think they were missing? And when we're talking about kids, whether they're eight years old or teenagers like I was, you're always blaming yourself. You're always trying to figure out, what did I do? What did I do to deserve this? And that's what I would ask. So I don't disagree that there, better systems need to be in place. I worked in higher ed when I started my career, and I sat on a committee that actually did sexual assault and violence education for the college I was at. And we would ask ourselves, oh, my God, I can't believe five people were assaulted this year. And we would say, well, at least it was only five. And the question was, it was only five because we were starting to create safety for folks to come forward. But the truth is, it was probably more than five, and you have to have systems that feel safe for people to come forward. And if those don't exist, you're going to continue to have zero. So the question shouldn't be, yay, we have zero. It should be, why is it only zero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to simply point out that I don't think it's reasonable to expect underage children to report the abuses that happen to them. That's why you're not getting any evidence of it because they've been made to feel broken. They are embarrassing their family. They're not going to go out and say, this happened to me. They're going to closet this. So you're not going to hear from those, especially the ones who have gone to suicide with this. So you're not going to get the reports from children on this. That's why it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to insert because the question was asked directly to me, and I answered it that, exactly. I mean, we don't have the mechanism to know who's being impacted and just hasn't come forward. I think that the question was, though, since this specific ordinance was in place and at the city of Columbia, are there any cases that were tied to it? And there's not technically any cases tied to it yet, but that we're not saying that it has anything to do with who's being impacted and hadn't reported.
Yeah. I just want to clarify because my name was mentioned, that's all. Yes, I'm a mandated reporter. I've been a mandated reporter for years now, gone through every single training through the University of South Carolina, through the Babcock Center, through my current job, all the above. Like I said before, I've worked with kids for over 10 years, and everything that they've said prior is true, is people, I go and I go sit at Transitions Homeless Shelter, and I sit there with children on a daily basis, and I call them children. Yes, they're 18 to 22 years old, but a lot of them have minds of 12-year-olds, okay? And they're like kids to me. I go sit at Palmetto Place Children and Youth Services. I go sit at Mercy, and every second and fourth Thursday of every month, I sit with children at our Safe Space dinners at Reformation Lutheran Church. And you know what they do? They talk to me. They tell me about what has happened to him. Now, as we know, I don't know what the statutes are in South Carolina, but there's nothing much I can really do if something's happened to somebody at five years old. But what I can do is I can be there for them, and I can hear them, and I can love on them, and that's what I do. And so if I, if there is ever, and like they've said before, we know, just like rape cases, we know that rape cases are underreported every single time. Even though my parents didn't send me off to a camp, they still tried to convert me in some type of way. Did it work? No. Am I thankful for that? Yes. But at the end of the day, did I have to go through almost 20 years of BS to get to where I am now, to go through the trauma, to not have a relationship anymore because of the trauma that it instilled? Yes. So is that still a form of conversion? Yes. And so that's what we're talking about today. We always report when we need to, but at the end of the day, most of the time, these kids come to me because they feel safe with me, and they're able to talk to me about the things that they go through. So thank you.
I would like to remove my motion for consideration, the first reading for ordinance 2025-43, and call for a motion to defer.
Second. Yes.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Mr. Mayor, for clarity, and again, you know, I have to speak as your practitioner and based off statutory requirements that I am faced with in the next few days and weeks. And let me say, the complexity of this issue and the genuine concerns that have been shared today did not go unnoticed. And I do hear from those who spoke, who said, if we can help bring solutions, let us know. I guess the reason we incorporated the budget educational little piece for me is because at this juncture, a deferral is still upholding the ordinance as it is for an indefinite period of time. And so with that said, I just have to reiterate that adjustments will then be made to the budget so we can get it passed in time, and those adjustments may affect initiatives that have been planned, reducing a city's ability to support certain programs, events, and organizations that might rely on a certain type of funding. So I just want to be clear on that. It is not being said to make anyone, I think some comments were made about, you know, I guess, making people feel a certain kind of way about where they are on the issue. It's not for that. It's just so people know and so that the solutions, like a veto by the governor, I mean, that is not something that we will take a position on. And as well as, I love the idea, and we were very aware of the Supreme Court pending decision, but unfortunately, timing is not on our side. And the proviso, as it stands at the State House, is not germane to a pending Supreme, United States Supreme Court decision. I mean, when it happens, it'll be a year from now, really, before we know the results of that. And so, again, the help, I guess, we would ask for the people that are here, because there are people that are not here that may be impacted by some of the decisions that we'll have to make with the budget. We're totally prepared to do it as a staff, but there's some pain points. And please help us and give us the time to communicate with other groups and individuals who may be impacted. And if you could, based off what was said, help in communicating that we want to work together on this issue and work together with the city to support those pain points that are going to come now with our budgeting process. It's not that we're not equipped to do it. It's not that we're not courageous. It's not that we're not ready to fight. We hear you loud and clear, and I think this council's not taking an action tonight is my directive to move forward with our budget. And whatever time now you need to work with the people that are here and organizations and groups that are not here, we're just being very clear and on the record that this is where we find ourselves from a budgeting perspective, is something, obviously, now that the council has spoken, that we're going to proceed where we are. But every, you know, action sometimes requires other reactions, and I just want to really be clear on that because it's a little bit uncomfortable and painful for me to have to do some things we'll be doing.
I'm so sorry, but I really have to. So instead of looking at it as money that you have to raise to make up a shortfall, consider how many people are going to end up either homeless or committing suicide. The Department of Health in Minnesota found that in order, if a conversion ban is lifted, they spend upwards of $86,000 per individual who live in that city. So maybe some of the money that goes towards some things would not end up being spent. So it doesn't look like you are losing money because you're not spending the same money. So I'm giving you a different way to look at it.
I appreciate that, ma'am, but it honestly is not, that's not really how it works, and I'm happy to talk with you further about how the budgeting goes for core city services. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman. Thank you.